We are live.
Oh excellent, okay. Thank you everyone, I'm gonna
Your patience.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Uh today's August thirteenth, um it is seven seventeen, this is Board of Education regular meeting for August. I wanna thank everybody um for their patience in us starting, normally we start right on time as everybody knows. However, we're having um I T issues and a huge shout out to Matt and Alex who are twenty four seven call and for every single meeting and logging in from their houses to get us up and going. Um really appreciate that. Uh first order of business, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
Pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And to the republic which stands
Exits are in the front, in the back of the room, you can take right or left and um exit the building. Um I'm gonna ask board for a moment of silence in memory of Emily Foster. Please know that our thoughts and our prayers are with the entire family. Um we'll start off this evening with the we actually I have um an item I want to add to the agenda. Can I have a motion to add under new business? A request for extension of unpaid leave um after M L A F M L A for the remainder of the twenty four twenty five twenty six year for uh Ms. Limkey. So move, shy.
Second.
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 Okay. All those in favor? I.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, report of the board chair. Um it's been a busy summer, normally the board um doesn't meet in July. However, due to the referendum and the negotiations um the board has been quite busy, so I just wanna take a moment to thank the board members for your time and your commitment, I know it's your summer as well. Um as we begin the new school year, um we'll be doing our board self evaluation this evening and then moving forward. Um your goals, actually I want you guys to set those in November because you'll have a new full new board coming on at that point. I don't think it's fair for a new board to come in to pre-established goals, I think you guys as a team need to do that. Um November will be an election year, we do have four people leaving the board. Um and in last year or the year before they changed when the um elected officials will actually come on, it used to be that night, you know, you would get sworn in and the next day you would be a board member. There's um a time period now. So what I am going to be um doing is talking to the town clerk and finding out when that is. And what I would like to do, um if everybody on the board is agreeable and the new electees is have a transition meeting where um we'll invite the new board members who have been newly elected to come in and kind of like just go over roles and everything, it's not gonna be a heavy duty meeting. Just maybe go over subcommittees where each one does and everything. And uh the elected board at that point really can't um vote but at the same time I think it's important for them to be able to kinda have a nice transition that goes back and forth.
I think that's what I'm creating, um I love that you're doing that, yes.
You guys like that? Um Board of Ed schedule um for the regular meetings um and these are all just every year at this time I do these reminders. Um the schedule for the regular meetings are posted on the website. If anybody would like copies of the agenda or the packets um from audiences um they're available in the office about twenty four hours in advance. I know there are times when we'll have added information that's not available until those meetings. If it is handed out at a meeting, then it is um an a document that is public. So um unless obviously we're in a second year session, so um people who want those can also request those as well. Um our October meeting, I will not be in attendance, I have a conference that's away. Um generally at all the regular meetings Board of um Education does do an audience to citizens. This is a reminder, not really for so much this meeting, but for all meetings in the future. Um it's an opportunity for the public to come and speak to the board. Uh per per board policy and bylaws public complaints may not include personnel matters, name individual board members or staff parents or students. To keep the comments respectful, the board chair always reserves the right to stop public comment at any time if the rules of conduct are broken or if it exceeds the limit. Just wanna remind everybody of that as we go into the whole season. Um other things, convocation is going to take place on the twenty first. Normally the board uh chair does speak, however I'm gonna be moving my son into college um and I'm not gonna be available and Laurel will not be available as well. So probably the staff will be happy to have one less speech and get right off to their rooms. Um okay, other updates, um letters. We've received um several letters um from parents um regarding the cuts and the budgets um and several that are complaints, some of those are personnel, um I will not be reading them. Um some of them have had personal attacks and um have even now raised to a level of concern of threatening uh the board. Um and um as such, I am not going to read off any of those letters, everybody has received them. Um cave, um please make sure that you're keeping up to date with on the emails from cave. Um and this goes along too, if anybody's out there listening who is gonna be running for the board. You can um log on to the cave through Facebook as well or you can just go on to their website. There was a meeting for anyone who wants to become a board member and prospective board members um can get all their information from cave on September seventeenth. Cave is holding a meeting, it's online meeting and I'm hoping that people will attend to this. Is understanding the twenty five change or the twenty twenty five changes to the state education funding. Um highly recommend this um as this could really affect our budget and our funding for next year. Um if any of the board members want to attend a cave function or a conference or anything just email Dr. Deprito and she will handle that with Kelly. And then we'll move forward from there. Um I guess in the same focus as the letters, there's been quite a bit of um of social media chatter, um many of them have been posted anonymously and it's unfortunate because some of the information has not been accurate, that's gone out um and there's no way to reach back to them. And as a board, normally we don't try to engage and I certainly don't have time in my schedule to do that. Um but I do wanna go over um what we went over in July. Um in July, the board did meet and at that time we received information from the um from the business manager and that included the fact interim. Um the interim business manager, I'm sorry. That included um the fact that our food service was over, thank you. I thought I I thought I had that, um that our food service was over by two hundred eighteen thousand dollars. In addition, um it was noted that the grant for the social worker who's presently employed um did not come through. Um so the board did have to make some hard decisions and work with Dr. Deprito on making those decisions um along with the enrollment. Um I just wanna go over as well enrollment numbers which are in your packet and I also wanna go over um information from the town clerk in regard to upcoming birth rates. So in your packet you'll find that the enrollment summaries are there as of August. Um when we're doing this right now, the elementary school total is three hundred and twenty four students. The middle school total students is three hundred and sixty one and the high school student count is two hundred and forty one. So the year ending for twenty four twenty five total enrollment expected, actually let me start with this year. Right as of right now, the total enrollment of our district is now down to nine hundred and twenty eight. The enrollment for twenty four twenty five was nine hundred and fifty seven. Twenty three twenty four was nine hundred and ninety two. The twenty two twenty three enrollment was nine hundred and eighty nine. Twenty one twenty two was eight hun- I'm sorry, nine hundred and eighty seven. And tw- uh twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, which was COVID, was um low but it was seems like good number right now, was um nine hundred and fifty eight. I also um asked the town clerk um to start giving us information so we can get that to the business manager so we can start doing real formal projections for what's coming down the pike. Um and the birth counts for um let's see if it's probably easier for me to read them up here. The birth counts for um the year twenty seventeen, which would actually bring the kindergarten year to twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three is was sixty five. Um when we're looking at the birth counts going down or up whichever way you wanna kinda look at your calendar, for twenty twenty four, there were seventy eight births in East Adam. Twenty three um is fifty five, twenty twenty two sixty twenty twenty one was eighty five and twenty twenty was fifty seven. So why am I bringing this up? Because we need to look at the birth counts and we need to do a comparison of birth counts to what we are expecting coming in to the kindergarten year. So I ran numbers and I'm gonna do even more research on this as time comes along or hopefully once our business manager has time. If we're at if we capture one hundred percent of the people that are or the births and they actually all come to school here um your projected counts for the school year twenty twenty nine twenty uh thirty could be as high as seventy eight, it could be as low as seventy. Um twenty eight twenty nine, you're looking at a class size of coming in that if a hundred percent come in, which usually doesn't happen, you're at a class size of fifty five. Um and if like ninety percent come, which is normally where we're at you're probably looking at a class size of fifty. In but there's some good news here. Um twenty seven twenty eight, um you could be anywhere from sixty down to fifty four. But twenty six twenty seven, which is um the next year, looks like a bubble year again and it could be as high as eighty five or as low as seventy seven. So where this is important is that as we are projecting out and we're looking at what our whole district is going to be we need to look at what these numbers are going to look like and where we're going to wind up being in our budget. Um because the days have gone by where you used to have one hundred, you know, they're gone. And so if our incoming kindergarten class right now where's my page? What are yours? Is fifty six. Um and the highest grade right now is grade eight with eighty three, you have to realize that coming years, your enrollment is going to be continuing to drop. So um I think that um that is really important. Um you know, there's been quite a bit of chatter that the enrollment numbers are not as bad as what we are saying they are, these are the real numbers. The high school only has two hundred and forty one total students. The middle school, yep?
When you're done.
Okay, the middle school has three hundred and sixty one and the elementary school is down to three hundred and twenty four. Um so that's all I want to say in regard to enrollment numbers. Um exit poll results, um I wanted to go over that really.
I wanted to comment on the enrollment but didn't wanna interrupt while you were talking about the enrollment but wanted to sneak in before the next topic.
Sure. Sure. Sure.
Do we have any like engagement or conversation or any information on why the enrollment is fluctuating so much?
Well, our birth rates are fluctuating.
Well, no, I know the birth rates are, but I'm just saying like for the ones that are in school from year to year.
It's
Are they going to other high schools, are they choosing to homeschool? Like I'm curious what the data is for that, cause we have a lot of data, that's great, thank you so much for bringing that. But I'm curious like like why if from like the elementary to the middle or the middle to the high school, why it's fluctuating so much? It's something I'm curious about there, you know.
Just Oh, where they go, they go to private school and they go to like a magnet school and type, yeah, so we could, they move out of state. But you called all of that.
So then the birth rate and the potential students wouldn't necessarily align with where they choose to go.
Correct, so the birth rates are the birth rates in East Adam, so you assume based on this and where I really kinda looked at was the past history once, I ran off you know, a couple of years prior.
That's great.
And it came off to being, I think I was off by like two numbers. You know, so I was pretty confident in that. Where it starts to really fluctuate is when you go from eighth grade into ninth grade.
Okay.
And with now with the magnet schools, some of the magnet schools are actually starting off in the sixth grade. So you start seeing some drops there.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So yeah, you can, it depends on the magnet schools and everything and trade schools now are really attractive to a lot of people and the trades are becoming more and more attractive. So um I think it's just important for everybody to kinda get a grip on this and hopefully I will try to put this all together for you guys and and leave it with you, cause you're gonna need this for next year's budget.
I would say too it's important to know like fall last year, fall eighty three to sixty three, fall freshman, same class, fifty three, it's a loss of ten students.
Right.
And that might not seem like a lot in other districts because you're assuming they go to final, Norwich, Mercy and Z or whatever.
So.
But it's a significant number here because we are a small district.
Mm-hmm.
That's what like the plan numbers are.
Yeah. Yeah, yep, for an incoming class in ninth grade is fifty three.
Right, but I'm saying last year they were sixty three, so.
Exactly. Right, right, and I was suspect.
Yeah, it's a significant number here, cause it's a smaller district.
Correct. And I was suspect that that eighty three, you're gonna lose some going off to a cause you always will lose some like moving off.
Yep.
And the trend seems to be going more and more towards some of the trades and everything too. Any other questions on enrollment before I go forward? Um I spoke to um the chairman of the Board of Finance and I was like, you know, where are the exit polls and where we stand with with everything that's kinda going on with that. Um basically the exit polls, it was really interesting. When you look at the counts, um in for May of tw- May twenty seventh, they had three hundred and twenty nine respondents. For the July one, they actually went down and they only had three hundred and ten respondents. And yeah, but the um too low number for Board of Education did go up by like, you know, seven, seven points. Um the acceptable went up by three points. Um too low plus acceptable went up um obviously to um eleven points when you have those together. Too high um went actually down a little bit. Um and then the town government pretty much stayed the same. So we only had like thirty four per- percent that participated. So uh Mr. Gelson did tell me that this is going to be in the paper. Um and I would, I'm not sure when he submitted it or anything, but I just wanted to share that with you. Um also in my talk with him today um Board of Finance last night passed a sixteen million dollar bonding package that will be coming up for a vote. Um that is going to include two million three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars for culverts. Firehouse was three million or uh four hundred thousand, that's actually for fire trucks, not for the firehouse. And for roads, ten million. So keep an eye out because I'm sure they'll have a public hearing coming up and that town votes. Um and um the roads, that ten million dollars, they're gonna spread that over the course apparently of four years. Um and Board of Finance can speak to when that bonding of the sixteen million dollars is gonna hit the tax rolls and how that's gonna affect the tax rolls. It was also brought to my attention that in September, um the firehouse um probably will have a presentation as of the last amount that the firehouse is um estimated to cost for the new one with sixteen million dollars. So um between now and when your budget season starts just want you guys to be aware, you're gonna have the vote for the sixteen million dollars coming up for the bonding package and the firehouse, I don't know when that will come to.
That'll be a separate sixteen million.
That's separate, that's completely separate.
So basically, there's a high probability that before we go to budget, we're going to have had thirty two million dollars taken out of the taxpayers in theory. Not that it's gonna hit all at once, but that
Yeah.
they're gonna be aware.
That that is correct. So basically, when I was talking with Mr. Gelson, you know, and trying to get a feeling for where we're going and this has been ongoing talks with him is um I'm very concerned about the budget for next year for the Board of Education.
Question for clarification because
Yep.
I don't always, I typically don't understand the whole budget process. So the town is moving forward through the Board of Finance
Mm-hmm.
to bond these items, which
With sixteen million, yeah.
in theory, I guess, they were what was cut from the budget last budget cycle, so they
Always never add.
No, they were never part of the budget.
So the town is adding extra expenses through bonding.
Correct.
For the town, but the we do, are we able to do that from the education side? Or we're not able to to bond for projects that are desperately needed?
Can't can't bond or
We have to wait for the Board of Finance and or the town to allow it to happen?
Realistically, when they're going out to bond, they're really going out to bond for large capital projects that are one-time things. But because they kicked the can so far down the road and have not paved the roads the Board of Finance has put together a whole package so that they can get all the roads repaired within the next four years, but it's costing us ten million dollars to do that. We don't, can't uh do that in our taxes, so what they do is they bond it. And then that's basically using a credit card and it's spread out over a life of whatever. And then it doesn't hit your tax mill rate as typical of each time.
Okay, so say
Right.
for example, like we have an elementary school that's not where it needs to be or should be and needs capital improvements, one time, capital improvements. And we have things that need to be done at the middle school or the high school or the school district property that one time would upgrade it. We're not able to bond that.
That's not correct. You can and it's up to them of how they wanna pay for it.
Of the Board of Finance to decide if it's if it's worth doing or not doing.
So
Can I can I add something? Um in this state, this is not true in some states, in this state the Board of Ed has no taxing authority and the Board of Ed has no, therefore no bonding authority. There's no separate budget that is controlled by the Board of Ed. So if there's a need for capital expenditures
Right, okay.
um on behalf of the school system, the school system has to present it to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance has to decide if they're gonna support it and then if it's a bonding thing, it's borrowing money, that means it's then gonna go to the voters. Cause the Board of Finance can't borrow large sums either.
Like the town, the town only takes out X amount of dollars, so there's certain big things that are gonna fall while they're looking at, like the middle school build is about to fall off. Um like bond bonding, right now the schools have the middle school, which was two thousand and seven.
Right, that's still
I think it's almost done and then I think it's next year, whatever.
Right.
And then we have the track and we have the H B A project.
That's a good track. Right, so what they do is and they go over this and they'll have their bonding council kinda come in and really that's where they have to draw the line is how much can the town be able to go out and bond for any of projects and stay with the rating that they need to do? Otherwise, they're gonna have to pay more money.
Okay.
So.
For for communities like this, bonding is almost like a revolving credit card. There's so much money that we bond, as we're getting ready to pay off whatever we bonded previously
Yeah.
now there's money room in the budget to bond more stuff. And the key thing is keeping the amount you're bonding low enough so that you don't suddenly get hit with really high interest rates.
And just to like circle back and like put a pin in it
Yeah.
it's the Board of Finance that ultimately decides what's going to
Correct.
go onto a vote
Yes.
for the For the correct people to vote on, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I, yep.
But it as board members, we have to be cognizant of all this.
Right, right, because I think from what I'm understanding from speaking with
Yeah.
with um Mr. Gelson and what I am hearing from constituents throughout the town is that um we came in very high, we knew we came in high. We were able to still withstand, you know, a five percent increase, but that's not the norm, especially since they are now aware of these dropping enrollment numbers and where we are. Um I think that we have to be extremely careful where the budget's gonna go for next year. Cause when you're looking at contractual agreements right now and um just what they are, you're close to a three percent increase right now for next year. So So.
Before you start.
That's before you start, before you start. Right, so.
Can I make a comment about this kind of related, or should I shut up?
No, no, go ahead. My report's awfully long tonight.
I, I know, well, we're, we're stretching it on you, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Um, I worked in a much bigger school district for a long time, for twenty years. And it was a pretty well-run school system. But school systems have a tendency to swell and bloat over time. And that happened in this particular school system. Because little adjustments that could have been made along the way weren't. The taxpayers began to realize this and started rebelling.
So, is that what's, are you saying that's what's happening now?
Well, let me finish, there, there, I'm, I'm headed somewhere, trust me.
Okay.
Um, the taxpayers started to rebel. And part of what they did was to install a superintendent who was going to immediately correct that. Not over time, not through attrition. And I lost fifteen percent of my staff, my high school was bigger than this school system. I lost fifteen percent of my staff in one move. That would be the equivalent of twenty teachers going by-bye in this district.
Yeah, you, wasn't that the same district that was like purchasing toilets to like stop to giving money back?
Yes, yeah, and that's part of. Yeah.
Like, we're not doing that.
No, we're not, but we do have bloat in the school system. And it's, some, not a lot, but some, well, for example, we have two board of ed.
You do? Where? So, we, we, we don't have, have, no.
So, um.
Okay, there is, but okay.
Okay, so what, the whole purpose of this was just to kinda give you a financial overlook of where, where we are. Um, people seem to be confused in regard to the two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that were over in food service. So, I just wanna address that as well. Um, the two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is not what we expected and we did not budget for that amount. Yes, we did put money aside for uh, food service for this year, cause we knew we were gonna need it. I think that number was around one hundred thousand, but we had to add, obviously. If we're two eighteen over last year, we're gonna have to anticipate that as well. Um, and, um. That's really kind of where we are, um, some of the other comments, I'm not just, I'm just not gonna. Even address at this point, um. Doctor Tabrina, do you have, or anybody else have any questions on my lengthy report tonight? Yep, okay, Doctor Tabrina?
Good evening, everyone, I do have, um, several things to share. First, wanna focus on the summer work, teachers have been collaborating, which has been fantastic.
Yeah.
Um, middle school in particular, science, social studies, math, ELA. And high school science as well, and elementary social studies, so really appreciate, um, teachers coming in. And spending the time to review curriculum and uh, make improvements and work collaboratively. Um, administrators are really busy, um, with uh, hiring, uh, filling vacancies. And with, um, the summer onset, I did have a couple of days of a retreat with administrators. The first one was in June with Doctor Hellerich from Sacred Heart, who worked with us on focusing, um, to elevate learning. Um, and develop some protocols. We are gonna be doing a book study, um, with the instructional facilitators. So, looking forward to the start of the school year, um, to continue the work. And then the second day for the retreat was this week. And we continued the same focus from June, but also spent some time reflecting on the district's, um, vision. And really, um, pulling apart the phrases that we have in our vision so that we can memorialize. And work collaboratively with the school district, um, to get the messaging out. That we really are committed to providing an excellent education. Um, currently, we're also preparing for the new teacher orientation, which will be next week, and convocation is next week. Um, looks like at the high school, hopefully the air conditioner, right, we're all hopeful, I was there today. Wasn't quite running yet, but they're telling us by Friday, so, um, expecting that to be, um, ready for everybody. Also want to share that, um, in prior years, there was work, um, that focused on transferable skills. And those really do stand out as the work for the portrait of a graduate or the vision of a graduate that you may have heard. So, wanna memorialize that work that was done, and so that will be in my welcome letter. Um, and so looking forward to developing that and having a visual on our website. And we are gonna work with NEASK as a district K twelve, every school will be represented. So that we can certainly have a robust vision of a graduate. Wanted to share, um, that the business office had received some, um, hoax, um, invoices. The invoices came from what seemed to be legitimate vendors with a W nine. And what seemed to be email communications between me and those vendors. And they had my name as if it was an email from, and it, but there was no way to actually pull down and look for an email. And they were fraudulent, one was seeking nineteen thousand dollars, another one was seeking fifty four thousand dollars. So, I did go to the police, there is a report online to fill out regarding these fraudulent attempts. And the police were meeting with the FBI, um, because there was routing numbers, account numbers for the money to be sent. Um, so we do have a tight system, we're small, but tight system where I do sign off on any checks. And so I'm sure we're not the only ones getting these, and unfortunately, there are victims that believe what the evidence is. And then the money, you know, is gone, so I wanted you to know that within two weeks, or at least two, one right after the other. Um, I did accept a donation on behalf of the district of three thousand dollars. And that came, um, from a family that wanted to support, um, education. And so it went towards the math course offerings, um, for the summer at the high school. So, if anyone wanted to do credit recovery or acceleration, that's what that went for, rather than charging students, cause they would've each had to pay six hundred dollars. So, this family was very kind, um, yeah, relatives of a student out of state. But really appreciate, um, your kind, kind gesture. Would like to, um, also speak specifically to, um, concerns out in the community. So, as your superintendent and a fellow member of this community. Um, I want to address specific positions that are not being filled. Specifically, the reading intervention position, um, there are two, um, positions. And one is currently filled and will continue to be filled by the teacher who's in that position. And then other one is not being filled, and so how did this come to be? So, in a time when we're really looking at, um, student needs, we want to recognize the progress that has been made. And there has been significant progress made. The, um, achievement will become public once the state allows superintendents to share the information. But I wanna give credit to all the training that has occurred. And the elevated focus in the classrooms and the collaboration at that level. Um, and our enrollment is also decreasing. So, in light of what Madam Chair has shared. That became a potential position that we are gonna monitor how we progress. In addition, at the high school, there were two full-time counselors. The recommendation by the association, the American Association of School Counselors. For a ratio is two hundred and fifty students to one counselor. We certainly have a better ratio than that, but with the decreased enrollment. Not eliminating, um, a position, but reducing to a point five. And again, we are going to monitor because we're gonna still serve our student population. In addition, the, um, ten-month secretary position is going to be shifted. So, that school is the only school that has two full-time twelve-month secretaries. And so we're looking at how we can make shifts and adjustments, um, with the current staff. And have a secretary in the guidance office, so working with the administration to make that happen. Um. I also want to be respectful in the fact that we're trying to realign our resources. To serve the population that we currently have. Um, many families are obviously managing their economic realities. And our goal remains to balance educational excellence with fiscal responsibility. That said, I understand the frustration, I understand the concern, I understand people are afraid, people are worried. It's a testament to how deeply our community cares for the well-being and success of every student. I want to assure you that every avenue is being explored so that we can continue the excellence that we strive. So, these changes will be monitored. At the same time, I would just wanna reiterate that we have a duty to protect the financial health of our district and the taxpayers to support it. We earnestly are trying to do what's right, even when it's hard. We should value the small community, we should value, yes, we have less students to serve, but we're gonna still serve them well. And we should value that we can have dialogue and be respectful and not lack respect when people might have fears or concerns. It is very challenging when the manner that the. Community at large presents doesn't creep into a school system. We are educators in the school system, we need to model the behavior of respect in front of our children. And so, I implore anyone who has concerns to call. To call, we can process, we can talk, that's the only way. Because the manner in which it is happening now is destructive and it's, it's just not right. No one's trying to take things away from children, we're still gonna provide services. But our reality is our reality, and we are progressing, there's a lot to celebrate. We have a school of distinction, I would like us to come together and look at the positive. And be very responsible in our decisions, that's what this is about, that, that's it. There's no ulterior motive, there's, no one's trying to harm anybody, right?
If, if I can interject, just to finish what I was saying.
Let her, let her finish her report.
I thought she had finished.
I appreciate everybody listening, thank you.
Are you, okay, I didn't.
You finished?
I, I.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go round table, go ahead, Jim.
I'll correct what I said before, maybe there's not bloat now, but there was the likelihood of bloat growing. When you have only two hundred and fifty kids in a high school, and you wanna have two guidance counselors for that. Then let me finish, please.
I, we, you've already said this.
I, can I finish, please?
Sure.
Um, the American Counseling Association reports the two hundred and fifty-one recommended ratio. They also report that, uh, the most recent figures show that the average ratio was three hundred and seventy-six to one.
Do we wanna be average?
No.
Do we wanna do the baseline for our students?
I mean, you don't.
Hey, it's not, it's, it's not, I have too much crosstalk, go ahead and finish, Jim.
Um, my concern is we have to keep sight of where we are. A few years ago, it took three referenda to get a budget passed. This year, it took three referenda to get a budget passed.
Jim.
Excuse me, we had five hundred thousand dollars taken from us. And we had to fight tooth and nail to avoid another two hundred thousand dollar cut. If we are judicious in the manner that we handle the staff, which is all anybody's trying to do. We can hopefully maintain the confidence, not only of the school community, but of the greater community of taxpayers who pay our bills. If we don't, the day will come where we get zapped and we lose fifteen percent of our staff in one move. And that'll be twenty teachers, and it won't be attrition, it'll be putting people out of work. I know, I lived it, there is nothing harder than looking at dedicated young teachers. Cause those are the ones that always go, cause they have the least time in. Last in, first out, that's the contractual obligation, I just don't wanna see that.
Kira, do you have anything for Doctor Tabrina's report?
I just wanted to say, uh, I guess to you back off that, that I think people need to realize too that we had no layoffs. If you look at even districts around us, there was significant layoffs in many towns, many towns. Like, I think East Hampton lost fourteen or fifteen student, uh, teachers. Uh, London lost like a hundred and fifty or something like that, uh, I mean, there's, I know it's not against, but, um.
Flat-funded, the number of flat-funded, um, districts is, districts is crazy out there.
Uh, flat.
Do you have anything else, do you have anything for Doctor Tabrina's report?
Um, yes, um, I just wanna say, speaking for myself. I strongly disagree with not, um, filling the reading specialist at the elementary school. I think, uh, they, what we have gained over the past few years. Is because of having two reading specialists in the school that has the highest population. And it, we all know that early intervention has better long-term effects, and if we intervene early, they're gonna be better. I know that you said you're monitoring, I appreciate that, but we know it works, so why wouldn't we do it? Second, um. I'm curious, um, for myself again, is so, as Jim mentioned. We went to referendum the first time, it got turned down. Before we went to referendum, we were, we had to take out five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand before it even went, right? The board of finance asked that upfront, so we, we, we cut that, it went to the referendum. It did not pass, so it came back, and we, you especially, were, were be, were handed the fact that. We could possibly have to cut up to another li- large chunk of money.
Correct.
And you, we presented a list of what could be cut further if our budget was cut further.
Correct.
Our budget was not cut further. Yet, we are tweaking and cutting and, and moving things. And, and I don't understand how if, and I understand that there's the food, the, the food services. Um, I don't see it as deficit, I think that part of being a school district is providing food to students, but that's neither here nor there. That is more like what is not being funded, and yes, there's applications out, but they're not being filled. Doesn't to me, I'm, I don't understand.
Let me try to explain.
And I, can I just?
Sure.
Sorry, and I don't mean to, I, with all respect, I'm not trying to, I just, you know, if I go, I get distracted and I don't come back, um.
No, 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 that's fine.
The students, for me, and those that teach them, but even beyond the teachers are great, but like the students are what's most important. And respect is earned. And what can be dis- destructive is not being completely opened and nuanced. And I know that there was, uh, discussion about having the. And I know that there was a discussion about having the confidence of the community and we have to be, you know. Healing and hearing, but we don't have the confidence of the community. We get notifications and we have conversations about that over and over. And to to Kira's point, I I I do appreciate the fact that we have not had the layoffs that other districts have had. But the sheer amount of resignations we've had the last six months is absolutely. I I I don't understand why we have so many resignations. And that should not be the way that we go about making our budget feasible.
Okay, so let me address several things. One, we went over this in July. The food service amount is over by two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Some of that money, so whatever we had left over in our surplus from last year. Needs to go to pay for that, we don't have, at this point, they haven't finished closing out the the year. But we're not putting a lot of money in our reserves. So this is a problem because when we use our reserves to pay for capital this year. We brought those reserves even further down. So in addition to having to pay off the debt from last year, the two hundred eighteen thousand. We need to figure out how we are going to budget this year because we're gonna have those same losses. It used to be, under the prior administration, we had a shared um. Food service director with another town. Unfortunately, under that management, the school that was participating decided not to work with us anymore. We also had to absorb then additional staff so that we could have the proper staffing. We have to figure out this two hundred thousand dollars for this into this year's budget. It's gotta come from somewhere, we also have the social worker grant. That social worker grant was not budgeted properly and we made a commitment in April. That we were not going to give out pink slips and lay off any existing staff. We need to pay her salary or his salary, I don't know if it's male or female, I don't know the social worker and their benefits. That money's gonna come from somewhere, like we can't go back and ask for more money. So there has to be line item adjustments, that's, it's it's as simple as that. And so that's that part of it, but at the same token. As Dr. DeBrito said, these positions are not eliminated. They are not being filled at this time, so she can monitor it. We have a new director of people's services and I see you signing. And right now, right now it's an interim, we also are waiting for the scores, waiting to see where tier threes are. How many are going to be in there and then let them develop that. If the services are needed, I'm sure that it's going to happen. And the same thing with guidance, we're not eliminating the positions, they're just not being filled.
And I I understand that I sound like a brat and I I truly am not trying to argue and disrespect you. I, if we don't, if we're not filling the positions now. And our budget is what it is now and and. Every, and you know, everybody's under the understanding that it's gonna be even harder to pass a budget next year. How are we ever going to get those positions back? If we don't have, if we don't put them in now and next year we have let a smaller budget. And by smaller budget is because the cost of everything is going up for everybody and we can't plan for everything.
So who would you like to cut so that we can fill, cuz that's what it comes down to.
But which was it before though, I don't unders- I don't understand.
We have these other, we have all these other expenses.
The food is expenses.
Two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars plus a social worker.
So that's close to three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
I don't wanna talk over you and I'm sorry, like, so we planned for next year that we we have a smaller. Oh, like a more tightened up food services budget, right? And then, if you can explain to me about why reserves are so important, like why is it like? Why wouldn't we be putting money into what we have going on now? And s- instead of finding it's important to put money like away for like what could happen later. Cuz what could happen later is always gonna happen, but what's happening now is happening now.
Yeah, so we've used up our reserves, we've not, we haven't used up all our reserves.
Right.
Our reserves have been used and anything that was left over from the year. Usually either goes into reserves or goes into a capital project.
Right.
But what I was saying was because of this two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Anything that was left over has to go to pay for that, plus we need to this year figure out how to pay for it. So, we have to figure out in those line items, the two hundred eighteen and the social worker. So if you're saying fill those other positions, what do you think? What line items would you like to cut that are gonna come up to close to three hundred thousand dollars?
I will openly admit that I am not the line item finance person. Um, I, I just, I don't, I just, I don't understand how we got from.
Patty, can I ask you a question?
No.
The three hundred thousand m- missing dollars, so to speak.
Not missing, but yeah.
You know what I mean.
Right.
Didn't we know about that before we submitted the budget for the second referendum?
No.
No, I know that, I I'm not saying that this is an art, like we're we're like being sneaky and nefarious, I'm just, I don't.
You might be even worse off because you're.
Is leading to the other, how now because there's.
Thousand is from the twenty four, twenty five school year, you're in debt. You're starting out the twenty sixth school year, start out this school year, two hundred eighteen thousand dollars in fi- in.
Right.
Food service financial debt, it'll be worse because we kept the. The meal plan, the amounts the same and everything else, because you can't expect, what are you gonna charge, twenty dollars for lunch, can't, can't do that. So, it's gonna probably be worse, we'll have, cuz we're not budgeted. We were at two like, two hundred eighteen thousand dollar loss for the twenty four, twenty five school year. We did not figure that in for the twenty five, twenty six school year, which is this current school year, so it might even be. Substantially worse and social worker grant was not in the twenty, the twenty five, twenty six school year budget either. So you have that three hundred thousand plus dollars in debt and that'd be even worse because what's gonna happen this year with food services. And that's so just lame in its turn, which is a correct.
No, that actually helped me out a lot, thank you. So, I like numbers and I know you do and you're really, you have a really good way of like. Putting it in a way that I can like understand it, so thank you, so.
Sean, do you have anything for Dr. DeBrito's report?
No, just interested to see uh the results of that, is, I hope. Fill out some things, we have any idea when that would be?
Usually, it's just before school starts, so I've reached out, I had reached out to the state and they didn't have a timeframe. But I'm hopeful it's this month, um, so yeah, like because my, when we look at the scope of reading and intervention. My huge concern is when students are in intervention. And we don't see the results to reflect that and then we really have to.
Seen, you you know.
Oh yes, I know them, I know them, but the state will not allow superintendents to share that, yes, yes, significant. Signi- like huge, huge. Oh yes, I mean, the elevation in the classroom, like cuz that's where it comes from, it's all the work in that classroom.
My my understanding was that one of the interventionists was out for quite a while last year, is that accurate?
Can you, oh, I gotta leave, sorry, yeah.
My apologies, thank you.
And, do you wanna go first, Carrie, or did you already?
We're replying to Dr. DeBrito's, this has been coming along meetings.
Okay, yeah, no, it's big, I feel like it. Um, okay, yeah. Alright, so, I think we went over this already with the budgetary concerns, there were obviously things that popped up, just. You know, I'm kind of saying this to the public here, like there are things that popped up, we didn't know about them. Um, and so, we also never made definitive decisions during the budget process. We did, we could not make this definitive decisions, we had to wait until we actually got our numbers and actually got all of our information. No one said, this is what's happening, it was proposed, this is what could happen. And so, that as a board is, and and the superintendent, that's all that we can do until we get down to game time. Um, Facebook is not real life. Okay, it's not a place to get information, it's not a place to give information. Um, and people should really understand that when you post online anonymously. With your name, whatever it is, you influence most of the public that has zero idea what is going on. So, you post your little thing with a couple sentences or your long paragraphs and somebody reads that and that is now. Their impression of our district is not representative of our district. Um, okay, uh, we have obviously gotten many emails that have been referenced. People throw out accusations, um, it's disrespectful, it's on top of the fact that. Um, when, you know, speaking for myself, when I reply and say. Have you gone to your building administrator, have you gone to the superintendent to talk? Not only have these people um said that they've done it and then not have not done it. Because I went right to the superintendent and asked those questions, so there were lies. They declined to meet with us to actually go over the issues, so please, public, do not talk. But then decline to solve issues, okay, cuz that's, it's not helpful. Um, people's resignations have different meanings. People resigned to be closer to family, there's all different things that, you know, we we can't necessarily share or know ourselves. We can't know a lot of this information legally, um, but it is not all because of the superintendent. It's not the superintendent's fault and everyone's resigning because of her, that's ridiculous. She's one person and it's disrespectful to make accusations about that by saying. The leadership, um, we all, you know, yeah, I think I get my point. Um, students are going to be served, that is why each and every one of us sit here on the board. We have had or have students in the district, we all want our students to be served. We all love education, we believe in education, our superintendent believes in education. If you, any of you wanna visit her office, you may find me there cuz I'm there quite frequently or on the phone with her quite frequently. She's always um focused on student achievement and she's caring, she's on the phone with people at nine P M on Sunday night. Okay, that's real. Um, and then the last thing and then I'll stop, uh. Board members from time to time may make comments individually that are not representative of the board. We wanna reduce this as much as possible, but please to the public, keep in mind that. Um, people will take sometimes one comment and look at us all as a unit, we do have individual thoughts and. Feelings and um opinions, so. I think it's important for us as a board to to maintain decorum and try to come together and and figure things out before we communicate to everyone. Um, but we're we're going to have different opinions on things cuz we're individual people and that's what it should be and that's how a board should come together. Um, I think that's what makes us, makes us great and unique, so. That's, that's me.
Carrie, Carrie, do you have anything for Dr. DeBrito's report?
Uh, I do, I and I I first of all, I wanna thank Dr. DeBrito. For the amount of consideration and a lot of hard decisions that have really. Taken the entire board coming together and understanding the budget and understanding. What we originally asked for, understanding what we ended up with. And it reminds me of, and I'm giving away my age here, but it reminds me of a song from a long time ago. If you all remember, nothing from nothing leaves nothing. That is exactly what we're dealing with and when you have. To make decisions and try to take the path of least damage. I think that Dr. DeBrito has done an amazing job with that and I wanna say thank you. Are they hard decisions? Absolutely, do we wanna hear that we're not going to have all the things that we wanted in this budget? It stinks, it absolutely stinks, but we were voted down by the public, by the taxpayers. Who said, no, the first time. So, we went back, we looked at everything and thankfully, at least that second time, that second referendum, everything passed. But we still are operating at a deficit, we're gonna start the year having dealt with lost grants. And. Food service of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. You can't take blood from a stone, but you can make decisions that will have. Taken into consideration the students of this district, the employees of this district and. Do the best you can.
Alright, I'm gonna wrap this up, um, there's a lot of, I understand there's a lot of stress and negativity. I just wanna address some of the things for your report, like you wanna say something?
Just a couple of things based on what I heard, so I can speak to resignations, there were at least five retirements. One moved closer um to another district to be closer to home. Um, another resignation needed a full time job, so like, that's reality, there are. Lots of resignations every year and especially for parent educators, it's all throughout the year. So if you were to add them all up every year, there there are a lot, but there were also folks. That decided it was their time and so they had celebrations and they decided to retire.
Okay, um, I wanna just um thank you guys all, but let's re-circle back. And let's look at some positives. Um, I am very confident in um the principal, the assistant principal. The um two president's secretaries at that, um, at our high school are amazing. We also have a social worker, we have a psychologist. I would stress to people, if anybody has a concern, to please go talk to the staff at the school. I do hear you loud and clear, the positions are not being eliminated, we're monitoring them. You're gonna monitor them as well with counts because what we're seeing with birth numbers and counts, they're gonna fluctuate all over the place. Um, thank you very much and thank the uh teams for coming in and doing the curriculum work during the summer. Let's refocus back on what we're supposed to be doing uh as well, not just finances, but the work for the students. Um, I walked in to Dr. DeBrito's office for a thing, she said you gotta come down here and. The whole reading team was in there and they're all working on on the reading curriculum and it 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 was just awesome. And um, I understand that you have had the other groups in there as well. Um, and I also wanna just acknowledge as well the custodial staff who works year round. Um, they have been working so hard to get the schools ready, um, and they are, they're looking good. That HVAC project has been a lot, um, so they still have a lot of setup and cleanup to do. So, when you see the custodians, please give them a high five and thank you for all their extra work, um. These summer projects are are huge for them. Um, and I think that um, we do have an amazing um group of teachers. And I wish them all well this year as well. That's the end of your report, um, okay, audience is citizens, does anybody wanna speak?
Yes.
Heather Lamar, one eighteen Town Farm Road. Um, good evening, I'm here tonight as a concerned parent to voice my strong opposition to the decision to reduce the high school guidance. Counselor position a part time, this decision affects my two daughters directly. This decision affects my two daughters directly, one entering her senior year and the other her junior year. Arguably, the most critical years in high school when students rely heavily on their counselors for support, planning, and guidance for college and beyond. Currently, students with last names A through K will have a full-time counselor. But those of us with L through Z, half the student body or about there, will now only have a part-time counselor who is also brand new. This is not only unfair, but it's deeply concerning. Some of my concerns include, how will a part-time counselor manage the workload for half the high school population? Who will write letters of recommendation for college applications? Who will support students through application process, especially those who are first-generation college applicants and need additional guidance? What happens when a student needs immediate support on a day their counselor isn't there and the other staff are busy? Already, my senior daughter is expressing stress over this. My junior is already missing a required class to graduate in twenty twenty-seven and have had to reach out to the other counselor who is not her assigned counselor, just to get help. I can only imagine how overwhelmed he must already be as the sole full-time counselor fielding questions from all sides. This situation is unsustainable. Important things like graduation requirements, college deadlines, class changes, five oh four and I E P meetings, these are all time-sensitive, high priority needs that can't be left waiting for a part-time schedule. In addition, I also recently learned that the guidance secretary position has also been cut or reduced. That is a major blow to the functioning of that department. Her role wasn't just administrative, it was essential. She posted all the local scholarships for our seniors, who will do that now. Tracked students' community services hours, which is a big deal to my senior who has almost five hundred hours worth of community service right now. Schedule parent and student meetings. Organize I E P and five oh four meetings, I know she does that because both of my children have those. Handled a constant flow of students and staff throughout the day when I've been in there for meetings, that office is always full. But no one in that position, who will take on these responsibilities, will they be passed on to the other secretaries? If so, that's unfair to them and unsustainable for the students. What concerns me the most is that none of this was brought up during the budget processing. Unless I missed it, which I could have totally missed it with everything that was going on. This position, as far as I was concerned, was already budgeted for, so where did the funding go? Why did we fight to get the school budget passed only to be bi- blindsided by cuts like these? This feels like another example of di- our district taking from the kids. We were alr- we were already told there would be no world language at the elementary level, which many years ago we fought really hard for. No French at the middle school, no earth science teacher at the high school, and now this, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Um, action on the minutes, motion.
There was one email that was from a student that wasn't able to be here tonight.
Is that able to be read out loud? Right. I I'm not reading any of them after seeing some of the comments that I I've received.
No, I'm just, I'm speaking specifically to a letter that was sent to us from a student that was out of town right now
I responded.
that was wanting it to be read out loud.
As I said, I am not reading any of them out loud um because of some of the tones. So I'm not gonna read one and then not the others, and I'll tell you exactly why. And and I'm gonna show you, sh- share with you this one thread. Consider these statements as a foreshadowing of your future emails should you not decide to fill the second meeting specialist position. Another one accused me of not caring about school or anyone because my son has now graduated. And then I had some other personal attacks, so I am not reading any of the letters out loud. Okay, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-fifth. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Can you make a note of when Kaya left here? So put it onto your note, yeah, so that way Kelly gets it. Do I need packet? Uh, no, I'll slide it. Okay. Um, motion to approve the special meeting minutes of July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Still moved. Still moved.
S- a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, it says Kira Thompson arrived at blank, I riled up five forty specifically, I'm supposed ten minutes late to that meeting, sorry about that.
Which one was that?
June twenty-third.
June twenty-third.
July twenty-third.
Or July twenty-third, sorry.
Just circle it for.
Um, did July twenty-third one, there was one other error.
And what was that?
Um, on the second page, um, it says motion to invite the superintendent Teresa DeBrito to executive session uh for the annual superintendent evaluation was made at six oh nine by me and seconded by Mrs. Garrity White. I don't know who Mrs. Garrity White is. I do believe it might have been Mrs. Garrity.
It is on the bottom of the page, Carrie.
I think that's the first.
Probably not, probably the first time I caught it.
Are the times right?
Wait, hold on, wait a second.
It would last fifteen minutes?
Then it's better get caught up.
No, no, it started at six oh nine, superintendent last.
This is all the same.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Fifteen, okay.
See, I'm.
Which one is?
Let me see.
Which one are you?
Which one?
You see that?
I'll use my computer.
I'll mark it online, it's page two of the special board meeting of July twenty-third.
Right here.
I don't have, uh, oh wait. I'll go all the way down, it's like the last under number four.
Oh, there it is, I see it.
Okay, okay.
Motion to approve the special meeting minutes of July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as amended.
Still moved, still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
And?
Aye.
Motion to approve the special meeting minutes of July twenty-ninth.
I was not there.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
You can still make questions.
Still moved.
I'll make second is.
Any discussion?
I was absent.
Okay.
I was on time for that.
Yes.
I hear that, that's that's good news.
Miss Johnson was on time.
Got it?
Yep, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Policy and instruction.
Um, we were unable to get a meeting time scheduled in July as we had hoped.
Yep.
Um, same thing happened in August, um, there's just too much going on at that point.
Yep.
So our next meeting will be September eleventh. Um, I did, uh, if if you folks remember during our last full meeting, we had um a bit of a snafu with some of the paperwork around one of the policies.
Yep.
Um, it was repeated.
Yeah.
I took advantage of that to talk with Doctor DeBrito and we eventually met with one of the staff members who had some real concerns about some of the things we were putting in terms of handling money.
Okay.
So, um, during that meeting, we came to a compromise, I have shared that with the policy committee. Um, and we will actually address it at our, on our September eleventh meeting. And assuming that there is agreement on it at that point, we will bring it for a new first read to the full board the following full board meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else?
Nope, I think that's good.
Right, business and planning.
I'm really sorry, but um I ha- we have not met yet. I emailed my committee and we're gonna set up a date as soon as possible.
Yeah, don't.
We're over you.
Yeah, don't apologize, Paul has been, Paul who is the interim, he's been um working so hard on and Lauren has been in as well to close out the end of the year. So I actually appreciate like a little bit of a break for him to kinda get up and kinda going on that. So, um, that's where his concentration's gotta be because in the past two audits have not been perfect. So he's really a perfectionist and really working with Val and Val's been fantastic working as well to really make sure that this audit comes out without a lot of problems. Personnel negotiations.
We are in the midst of the teacher contract negotiations and um the next meeting, I think they're com- confidential dates, the board of finance chairs of the superintendent as well.
Board of Finance has requested a seat at the table and per the rules, per the laws, he is allowed to do that. So they wanna see what's going on. Um, capital improvements. Oh, you're busy today.
We met. Uh, July first and July three-first and we reviewed the bills and the ongoing project, the high school should be complete by the start of school. And the elementary is still uh plugging along. That big main component, the switchgear is still not due to the end of November, December. So they should have everything like slged up, I went today actually in person to look and it's uh I I you have to give those custodians credit, it's it looks very clean, but like the whole, all the ceiling tiles are ripped out, there's uh maybe prepare your students, there's the little flag, so if the, no, no student should be on the roof, but I employ a worker that's on the roof, they can't go past the flag cuz um some of the duct work is on the roof. So there are some actual um uh facade, you know, roof line changes, I'll call it. Um, but it's gonna be a great system, we just can't get up and running until that switchgear comes and that.
Switchgear is a major problem in my.
And we're not the only district, so I don't think we're some kind of whatever, it's uh literally sounds like whatever this component is, is missing from a lot of those projects.
And those workers have been out there in the heat, in the humidity, in the oppressive weather, working to do it. Like I've been in and out, just on the grounds, um, and they're there, like doesn't matter the weather, working really hard.
A lot of the big.
So like kudos to everybody that's doing everything to get this done.
The kudos to God.
You know, we always forget to bed on, he's everywhere, yeah, he's done, does a phenomenal job.
When it's done.
All the time.
And so I think that, you know, just a shout out to him as well.
The majority of the project got done in summer, it's uh
Yeah.
A lot of it, like I said, the external stuff is either uh condensers outside and big new interesting looking condensers Mm-hmm. and then the inside's all in ceiling, although the outside too, there's some duct work on the roof, so I feel, still looks good, school looks good still, we'll be specific there.
Yes. Thank you. Lauren?
We have not met.
Okay. Ray Bor.
Have not met, mm, nothing scheduled currently.
Long Range has not met, safety, we will meet again in the um September marks. Okay, no old business, um, new business, we added a line item. Can I have a motion to extend an unpaid leave um after F M L A for the remainder of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for Miss Lim- Lim King?
Okay.
Lim King.
Still moved. Still second.
Any, um, any comments?
It's a great teacher, awesome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to her and her new baby. Um, okay, board event self-reflection. Hopefully at nine o'clock, I do wanna get this done.
Should we read?
Do you want, do you want me to table this?
I will table it.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to table the board's self?
Still moved, second.
Any further discussion?
Table till September, next look.
Yes. Yep. I'm a hundred percent in agreement on that.
Sorry.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
We need to vote, we gotta vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Is there a motion to approve consent agenda one through four?
Still moved. Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, discussion and possible action regarding the sale of the high school H P one-one-five fifty-four inch. Um, and let's start with that, the high school in your packet, there's some older equipment and there's two of these, one right off the other one. Um, that they would like to discard, per board policy, it needs to come to the board. Is there a motion to to approve the sale of the high school's H P one-one-five fifty-four inch?
Still moved.
It's a printer.
Yes, yes, printer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and possible action regarding disposal of the high school's science lab equipment. This is old outdated equipment, oh, actually, let me put the motion on the floor, is there a motion?
Still moved, second.
Second, second.
Should you read which items just so people know for clear for clarity?
Yep, so what they're doing, and this is actually, you are absolutely correct, cuz I don't want people to think that
Mm-hmm.
we're wasting money or s- you know, buying a bunch of new things.
This is very specific and I will be on file, I'm sure, for reasons.
Yep. Yep. Are you on that page now?
I am.
Might read off quickly what those are.
Okay, well, I am not a science major, so here we go, or an English major.
You got this, just do this, just do this.
A centrifuge, a centrifuge. Oh, I was gonna read out her items, the older ones.
Oh, I was gonna just read off her note. Make it fast and easy, here, I'll do it.
I would, I would list the specific items.
Yep. Okay, I'm writing.
The centrifuge is supposedly seven, it's this specific teacher has been at this school for uh many years, we'll say almost twenty, I don't wanna give out any information. And they have not used this machine ever. Uh, the spectrophotometer, oh, I think I did that. There are two reasons for removal of this antiquated machine, they have updated the technology uh linked to Google Drive and therefore there's better options and secondly, it's no longer functioning. So I think that would be some, and then there's literally, it's described as some type of ancient greenhouse plant incubator. They no longer need this machine and have never used it. Um, and the last two are two incubators, these incubators are outdated and interesting. Uh, additionally, they have two other incubators that are large enough to support the lab construction in biology.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I did that twice. Alright. A motion to go into a second of session to discuss non-union wages and invite the superintendent in.
Second.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's it for you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Do you, do you want a two-minute?